Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our December 11th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to introduce our new Planning Board Secretary, Nicole Montessoro. Welcome. Thank you. Would you please take the role?
Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Michael Coughlin.
Here.
Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Anthony Sutton. And Christopher Spurts.
Here.
Much nicer job than you've done in the past month, so just so you know. These are the draft minutes for consideration approval from November 13th, 2024. Any changes anybody has?
No.
There's some changes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
If they were the correction.
You saw that?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. First on our agenda, we have a time extension for Granite Point, and this board is in receipt of a letter from a former resident of the town. The entire board got it and the rest of the staff. It's a request for the 30th night a time extension for Granite Point subdivision. It's a re-grant of final subdivision approval, wetlands, steep slopes, tree preservation, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control permits as per Resolution 2017-10. And the dates are from January 10th, 2025 up to and including April 9th, 2025 as per Town Law Section 276.7(c) and Town Code Section 150-13m. For the record, the property is located, excuse me, on the east side of Route 8118 and 202, adjacent to the Amawak Reservoir, and it's located in an R40 zoning district for the development of 23 lots in a cluster subdivision.
Does anyone have any updates from?
Do you, does anybody want, Tim, Mr. Allen, would you want to give us any updates that you're aware of? Please?
Good evening, Tim Allen of Bibbo Associates representing Granite Point. As we discussed, one of the last extensions, the property has been cleaned up physically. There are some issues that contractually of getting back on the property. We're working with the DEC now and working out how we're going to get access back to the property. Essentially, we've been blocked from that property ever since the cleanup started. It's been fenced off and locked. So we're working with the DEC on that. Subject to final approval and coming back for final approval. I've had meetings with both the DEP and the Westchester County Health Department to basically get the ball rolling again and reapproving the project to be back before this board for final approval. So it really becomes a DEC when we can get back on the property. That may be contractually a year that we cannot access the property. I'm not sure yet. So we'll get back to you and we'll keep extending until we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board member comments? If not, make a motion that we extend the re-grant as, like I just mentioned, of the permits from January 10th, 2025 up to and including April 9th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No.
Okay.
No. I think you should take a roll call.
Nicole, would you please do a roll call?
So. Michael.
Coughlin. Aye. Yes.
Vicky.
Aye.
Jack?
No.
Bruce?
No.
Anthony?
Yes.
Christopher?
I'm going to have steam.
John?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on, the next one is the continuation of our public hearing for the lack of wetland and water course and stormwater management and erosion and sediment control application. And the address is 11 Valley Drive. This property is located at 11 Valley Drive, and it's in an R40 zoning district. For the record, they still have to go back to, is there, is there anybody here representing them? They have to go back to the ZBA, so, I mean, I don't know. I'm looking for some direction here from staff about that, but we really can't act on this. We could maybe close a public hearing or keep it open, but, and or maybe direct staff to prepare a conditional resolution. But we can't really do much until they come back from their ZBA room.
That's correct. At the last meeting, you had directed staff to prepare a memo to the zoning board saying you were, you had no objections to the requested variance. That was passed on to the zoning board. You're correct, the zoning board doesn't meet until after your meeting tonight. So you would, my suggestion would be to adjourn the public hearing. If you so desire to have staff, direct staff to prepare a resolution, you can do that for the next meeting.
Everybody feel okay?
I think that sounds like.
I just want to double check, is there anybody here from the public that wants to speak on this matter? If not, then I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Adjourn it or close it?
My suggestion would be to adjourn it.
Okay.
After you have the zoning board's.
You're right.
Decision, and then.
Then we can close.
Correction, correct.
Make a motion, modify, make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing until the next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is a Harney preliminary subdivision application for 10 Cairo Lane. And Nicole, has it been published and posted?
Yes, the legal notice was published in the Journal News November 27th, 24. And the adjoining property owners were notified via mail on November 22nd, 2024. And the site stating the date and location of the public hearing was posted on the site on November 27th, 24.
Thank you. For the record, it's for preliminary subdivision for the property located at 10 Cairo Lane to subdivide the existing property into two residential lots. It's in an R40 zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Tim Allen of Bibbo Associates representing the applicants. The applicant, Melissa Harney, is here, and Dave Schoenberg. We are here tonight for a subdivision of 2.5 acres off of Cairo Lane, which is off of Level, just south of Lake Lincolnville. The property at one time in the past was two lots. We're asking that the board consider a two lot subdivision with a new lot being an acre conforming to the R40 zone as shown on this plan. The access would be a single driveway off of Cairo with a septic and well on the property. The existing house would remain as a single driveway and be a roughly 1.4, 1.5 acre lot. We're before the board for a public hearing. We had resubmitted plans prior to Thanksgiving. I'm not sure, Steve, you saw those?
Yes.
Okay. So we'd, our last meeting, really, we had more of a sketch plan, and now it's more of a site plan that you normally see. So we're before the board for your consideration.
Comments from our planner and engineer?
No comments.
Steve?
Yeah, Tim, could you describe the topography of the property and some of the environmental constraints? And just the layout of what you have proposed on the lot?
Sure, steep slopes are shown on the plan as hatched in area. The property is somewhat unique in that it comes into a low bowl area. Very similar to what we, if you recall, Dr. Renati's little parking area that we did, where it went into a small area and the water just infiltrates there. So there's not a lot of elevation change, so we're just trying to utilize that low area for the stormwater, which will be discharged through a storm filter and then outletted into that low area on the property. We've tested the property last week. It is infiltrative for both septic and stormwater.
And so the filtration unit you have is receiving runoff from the roof? Is it receiving anything from the driveway?
It's not anticipated, just receiving anything from the driveway.
Okay. And so you did the site testing and were making an application to the Health Department for the septic, or that's been?
Yep, actually, we're planning on putting in the application for testing tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I think our only concern is, is obviously you have good soils on that site. Just the direction of the flow of water towards the septic in that bowl and making sure that the Health Department's okay with separations.
Yep.
So we have this as an initial submittal for the site plan. We don't expect our comments to be extensive, but it's, it's under review and preparation.
Okay. Any board member comments before I open up to the public? Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Yes, just come up to the mic if you would, just introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm Michael Bocino, and I live across the street from the proposed site, 7 Cairo Lane. My only concern is where the water that isn't at Lowell Land currently, where would it go once they like, are they going to fill it in, dispersing it onto my property and my next door neighbor's property? Or where would that water go is my only concern? That's currently in the low spot, you know, in between there two, the two lots that they're going to have.
And that, that is part of our review of the engineering plans. They're not showing any grading through that area. It doesn't look like they're going to be filling that in, that they're going to leave that as a.
As like a little pot area? Okay. Yeah, because right now there is a, there is a pipe underneath the road that leads into my yard or in between our, both of our yards.
Got it. That's part of our review and.
Okay. That's my.
Valid concern.
All right. Thank you.
Board members? So Steve, if I'm hearing you right, you suggest that we keep the, the public hearing open until that question is answered? Steve?
I'm.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm considering, sorry. I think that that's, that's reasonable, though I don't anticipate too many comments on there. And it will be eventually, I assume, a conditional approval anyway, given the Health Department approval outstanding. And so it can be, if there are any minor engineering comments, we'll have those to you for the next meeting. It can either remain open at that meeting or it can be closed with the conditional.
Okay.
We've, we duly noted the neighbor's question, and again, we'll, we'll address it through Steve's comments. So we would ask that the board consider closing the public hearing. That's the only public comment.
No objection.
I mean, I'm confident in our codes and the stormwater protections and the other layers that we have in place now that maybe when original construction was done in that area may not have been in legislation. So I think we can close the, if the stormwater is what the concern is, confident that it'll be remedied if there is even a problem with it prior to resolution between the engineers. So I'm okay with leaving, or with closing the public hearing.
Yeah, me too.
I think if we do our usual close, but leave it open for written comment 10 days, then that allows anybody who's not here, it's terrible weather, to, you know, submit their concerns, because we have another neighbor apparently next to the gentleman who appeared, so.
I like that compromise.
Okay, I make a motion that we leave the public, that we close the public hearing, but obviously keep it open for any written comments.
Second.
10 days, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How does the board feel? Are we in position to, to a conditional resolution, direct staff? Steve, you feel comfortable with that?
Let's do it.
Okay.
Even without the, the engineering review?
Well, I think that would be a condition.
We've initiated the review, we just didn't have a memo prepared for the board. Usually with an initial submittal, there is a, more of a 30 day period as opposed to the week and a half period that we have since this formal submittal was made. So we have conducted enough of a review to know that we don't anticipate the site plan to change in response to our.
And any concerns you have would be directed at the next meeting?
Correct.
And that could be part of a conditional resolution.
It's modified at the meeting.
Make a motion that we ask staff to start preparing a conditional resolution.
Second.
Our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Forum Parent Road Wetland and Water Course Protection and Stormwater Management and Erosion and Sediment Control Permit Application. The property is 2.65 acres, and it's located at a four parent road in an R80 zoning district. And Nicole, notice has been published and posted?
Yes, the legal notice was published in the Journal News November 27th, 2024. And the adjoining property owners were notified via mail on November 22nd, 2024.
Thank you. Evening.
Board, just review of the project. I guess a couple of timeline items. We ended up re, re-sending the, the septic paperwork to the Board of Health because the original septic approval expired. So we received comments back from the Board of Health. We addressed them. I actually have a meeting with DEP out there tomorrow morning to look at the site. Stephen is office had a couple of comments regarding the stormwater. The Open Space Committee didn't want the use of infiltration units on the property, so we removed the infiltration units and we replaced it with a bioretention basin. We did do field testing at the area of the bioretention basin. You know, roughly at about 45 minutes an inch, not, not a great perk rate, but our, kind of our, underdrain anyways. So we treat the water quality and want it from the roof area and also adjacent areas flowing down the hill towards the stream. In addition, in the plan, we're doing some wetland mitigation plantings along the wetland line. So between the septic, the well, we're using as much of the existing topography as possible. Where basically there's a little bit of a hill, a little bit of a hillside towards the east, and the house will just be nested kind of right on that, in that, that bank right there. The board has come out for the site showing, I mean, for the, for a walk, walkthrough. The blue heron's still there, I saw it a couple people. So he's, he's happy there. So there's no plan to do anything, you know? Obviously, the construction itself will be based around the residence, the septic and the well and the bioretention basin for the stormwater collection.
Thank you. Dave and Steve?
No comments. Can you clarify, just for the board, the, the surface of the driveway post-construction?
It's, it's going to remain as a gravel drive.
Paved within the right of way, but then gravel from, from there per town code. Yeah, our, our one remaining comment was just a condition of the approval should be the Health Department approval. We did have a comment about looking for an additional survey, but that has been provided. So we have what we need for that.
Okay. Sir, is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Or member comments, and then we could close the public hearing if you feel comfortable with that? Any?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
For written comment for 10 days.
Yep, for sure. How you feel, everybody feel comfortable with a resolution being prepared by staff?
Yes.
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 Okay, make that motion that staff prepares a resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next on our agenda is amended special use permit and amended site plan approval for the wireless telecommunications facility application for the new singular wireless PCS at 87 Route 202 in Lincoln Hall.
Good evening. My name is Joe Castellano. I work with Aerosmith Development. We're representing new singular wireless PCS, which is more commonly known as AT&amp;T. And I'm here tonight to basically get a amended special use permit and an amended site plan approval for the existing telecommunications facility located at 87 Route 202, Somers, New York. I'd just like to give a brief explanation of the scope of work that we're doing on the site. We have nine antennas on the site, three of those are remaining. The three out of the six that we're replacing are the same exact size, just a model, and then the other three are a different model. And then of the 12 radio heads that we are replacing, they are all coming down, and they are all being replaced with 12 new ones. Those are located behind the antennas, so you don't really see them. They're just behind them. Yeah, and for the ground level, we are swapping out one battery backup cabinet for a newer model. The entire purpose of this is just to replace the Nokia brand with our Ericsson mod brand. See, I'd like to open up for questions.
The three that are the new antennas, are they drastically different sized?
No, they are 13 inches shorter and four inches wider.
Do you know if there's any increase in output based on the upgraded?
No, they should be exactly the same.
Same. So it's just a brand?
It's just a swap, yeah. Upgrade swap.
Okay.
The physical dimensions of the radio heads, same? Just, you know, just concerned about load, wind loads.
Anthony, your, your comment was about wind loads, structural stability of the?
Yeah.
Okay. Did they have a structural report?
So there was a, there were two, two reports submitted. One was a structural report that included a visual assessment of the tower, and that was dated, I believe, the year 2000. And then there was a, a structural analysis that basically analyzed the new equipment and found no issues with it, but there was kind of no reconfirmation of the conditions, which is a little bit of a nuance in the, the town of Somers code is that the special use permit does request a structural assessment based on a visual inspection. Typically, we, we look for that to be pretty recent to the time of the work.
So there's nothing that increases the wind, the wind load on top of the tower?
The structural engineer reviewed it and determined that there was no issue with the wind loading. I wasn't trying to avoid the answer, just some.
No, I get it, I, you know, I just, I've had some experience in that and putting dishes on top of towers without structural analysis and.
Those, those radio heads, they're the exact same size to ones.
Excellent.
Taken down.
Thank you.
We're still waiting for a stamp report, correct?
So the, the structural assessment, the issue is really just the, that it's almost five years old. It's almost as old as the, the original special use permit was. I do recall one recent project where it was a condition of the approval and a building permit that a new inspection be conducted in, in conjunction with the work on these towers that have multiple carriers on them. In fact, this board reviewed a, another carrier's special use permit update earlier this year, and that carrier submitted a structural report with the visual inspection per the request of the town. It's one of the complicating things here, we have multiple carriers, each one does their own thing, and they don't coordinate with each other, because it has been done, and I don't think that it would have changed significantly in the past few years. So I think for this particular case, it's not unreasonable to make it a condition of the building permit that they submit an updated inspection that could be conducted in coordination with the work. Our major comment, our second comment was just confirmation on the qualifications of the person preparing the EMF certification. We've received that, no issue there. We did have items A through H in our memo, 3A through H. Those are items that are part of the town code that this board has at its discretion decided to waive for co-location or equipment updates, but it's in the code as part of a special use permit issuance that these be required. The applicant has provided some, some responses to those, which, you know, may, may help in the board's review. But I also don't know that they are particularly applicable to just a replacement of equipment.
Okay, thank you. How's the board feel? I mean, a lot of times we don't schedule a public hearing for things like this, is that correct? I mean, we have the option not to, right?
You have the option not to. Typically, when you're just swapping out equipment, it's basically a one for one. I think this is what the applicant presented. I think the last time you had dish come before you, but that was a brand new facility on a tower.
Right.
And appropriately scheduled the public hearing for that application.
Okay.
This, I think they've been through the application process before. They've been through the renewal process before. So this is again, just swapping out equipment. So it's, it's up to you, but my suggestion would be to waive the public hearing, waive the site plan requirements that Steve has outlined.
Yeah. Okay. I make a motion, we waive the, is there a second on that?
Second.
Yeah. With the report, though, from the engineer.
That would be a condition.
Yeah, the condition.
Right, yeah.
So then I'll make a motion that we direct staff to prepare a resolution with that, with the, with that condition.
That condition.
Right.
Yeah, although we didn't vote on the waiving of the public hearing.
Oh, okay, I guess we do have to do that one.
Yeah.
Make, make a motion, no, I thought somebody did do that.
We made a motion, I didn't hear a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What you needed.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, are we looking for a structural analysis or a visual inspection power?
Visual inspection of the tower.
Kind of synonymous with this.
So the, the structure, the inspection of the tower certifies that the condition is consistent with the structural analysis and calculations that are being prepared. So obviously, you can do a calculation on paper that says this can support it, but if it's all rusting and falling apart, that's a bad assumption.
Yeah. You know, in my experience, the structural analysis includes the vision inspection, taking into account the age of the tower. And if there's any, been, been any load, because the wind load is, is really key.
Absolutely.
That's what, if it falls out there, I don't know that there's anything in the proximity of it, but.
I think it's up in, it's up in private property.
It's way up in Lincoln Hall.
Way up on the top, yeah.
Yeah.
Not like it's on the street corner. I mean, it's all valid.
All right, then I'm, I think we voted, I'm also make that motion that we direct staff to prepare a resolution with the conditions.
Second, that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Evening, thank you. Next on our agenda is 12 Wesley, Western Way for a wetland and water course protection application. The applicant is proposing to construct a 24 by 30 foot detached garage in the wetland buffer area. The property is located at 12 Western Way, and it's in an R10 zoning district.
You can use the tax there if.
There's some pushpins in the corner.
Got pushpins for that purpose, yes. Did defile that 300 year old board.
What's the gap now between the, if you can see light?
Yeah.
Wow.
We've got a lot of tech in the room.
Next to our screen.
Times we don't.
Got to call it board.
Evening.
Good evening. Name is Roman Puchalowski. I'm representing a engineer of record, Viktor Vasilevsky, and we're proposing to build a 24 by 30 garage, which falls into the buffer zone for the wetland. And as you can see on the.
You want a point, there's a pointer hanging there with a red tip you could stand and point.
As we can see on the drawing, the, there is an existing gravel driveway. So this area has been already disturbed before, and it's a very small footprint of the garage over here. All the excavation is going to be contained on the property. There is not going to be any hauling out or bringing in any material except the building material. And the drains of the roof is going to be contained into the dry well area, which is going to be past the garage area, safe distance from the foundation. So therefore, we're not really impacting too much on the existing condition of the, of the wetland. And the dwelling, as you see, was built in about 1950 something. I don't know exactly. And so probably this wetland wasn't even considered in the, today's codes. So therefore, as you see, all of the property is basically in a 100 foot buffer zone. And this is the best location for the garage as the area slopes from Westway down in that direction. And actually, this driveway is part gravel and part asphalt, and that's the best location really that we can use for, for the, for the garage.
Thank you.
Can I ask a silly question?
Sure.
If you're going to build a garage right on your gravel driveway, and you're going to bisect it with the garage, how is that driveway going to function in the future?
Well, this, this is only Paper Street over here. There's no. Well, this, this is only Paper Street over here. There's no exit from this area.
Okay.
So originally the, in the past, I don't know the history, in the past, maybe there was a.
They used to go previous owner with a second owner on the home and they used to kind of use like circular drive, kind of drive around coming down sideways and used to drive around just swing around. I don't need to do any of that. I just want to access my, my garage right here. This is paved this part and this is gravel right now. So people get there to swing into the.
So your garage door is going to be on the, where I would have intuitively thought opposite this.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Where's the other rec, what's the other rectangle up in the?
That, that brown area there, right?
Area.
Brown area and the one to the left.
You're subject.
Septic field which was built years ago and now it falls also in a buffer zone.
I think we're asking about the box beyond.
Yeah.
Yes.
Has been on the property since the previous owner.
Dave and Steve?
No comments. As an initial submittal, we're still taking a look at this one as well. Just kind of verbally here and I, would this go to the open space committee as well? This application. So I know that they will, they will comment as, as I will as well. When we're putting this in the wetland buffer, is there any way that instead of a dry well, a bio retention basin could be considered a little bit more wildlife friendly than, than a dry well? And you're probably are going to be limited in terms of your groundwater level with a dry, dry well anyway, this close to the wetland. So that may be easier to construct and has some ecological advantages here too, just to handle the, the roof runoff from, from that. We do look for mitigation for additional disturbance in the wetland buffer. I think some of that could be accomplished depending on how the rest of that circular driveway is removed. Is that becoming, is it going to remain as gravel?
Gravel.
Yeah.
For us it's growth fluid. I mean, it's not.
Okay. Are there, are there any portions of the, and this is an open question. I don't need a response now, but given that the majority of the property and the disturbance in the mode area is within the wetland buffer, are there any corners or areas that could be allowed to become more of a meadow state and, and provide some more ecological benefit of that buffer to the wetland and have that be part of a mitigation plan? I'm sure it's wet right along that boundary and you probably don't want to mow right up there anyway.
Plus it's been dry lately, but it's, it really, I've never had a wet. The only area, the only area where I've had a little bit of lawn here, which is actually if the wetland itself.
The property's sloped in that direction and it drains. So this area is always dry, no matter how much water comes out, how much drain.
So that would be something we'd ask for, for, you know, you're, you're adding a structure into the wetland buffer. We care about, you know, the protecting the function of the wetland and providing the, the ecological benefits that the wetland buffer does. This is obviously has been maintained area. It's kind of grandfathered area. But in, in mitigation for putting additional impervious surface in the wetland buffer, the town looks for applicants to, to mitigate that impact and provide some offsetting measures to maintain the function of the wetland and the wetland buffer.
Right. Just sitting in an old driveway for the most part.
And that, that I think goes a fair bit. It's kind of an equivalent trade there in that way, but looking for, for low hanging fruit and, and easy ways that homeowners can continue to support the function of the wetland might be, you know, removing other incursions into the wetland. You obviously don't have any structures in there, but again, you go back there and mow, maybe that gets pulled in or maybe there's some additional plantings that get put in as part of this as a, as an offsetting measure with other projects we've looked at, taking existing roof leaders for, that handle impervious area in the wetland buffer and asking for them to receive some stormwater treatment. I think that's probably less practical in and around the back of, of your home with some of the landscaping that's back there. So again, looking for other ways to mitigate the impact that, that's being had and that are reasonable.
So please make the suggestions.
Yes.
We will comply.
And be happy to, to have a call with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you think this warrants a site? Well, I mean.
That's up, up to the board. We've done, I've looked at it just kind of Google street view and aerial mapping. And I think that's been sufficient to understand the context of the property.
Nah, four foot shed.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah.
Set that precedent will be every weekend. No offense.
So I, I think though, we probably need, we probably need a little more information before we schedule a public hearing, I would think. Don't you?
I, I think it's reasonable to, so our review is underway and have a memo to you before the next meeting. I think it's a relatively simple application. I don't.
For the next meeting? Okay.
I think that a, a public hearing at the next meeting is.
Okay.
Certainly we could open it and if.
It's open.
Keep it open.
Standing issues, we could hold it open.
Right. Make a motion in it. We open a, that we schedule a public hearing for our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, that's January 8th, 2025. We'll, we'll start the public hearing then.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm getting in touch with Steve's office. I'm sure they'll be more than happy to give you some ideas.
And I, the applicant has been in touch with the engineering technician, Steve Wolfle, and he and I have connected.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening. See you next year. Next on our agenda is 247 Route 100 LLC Rockledge Center, formerly a Pinewood Business Center. The application for amended site plan approval, 247 Route 100. The application for the amended site plan approval for the installation of a new driveway and loading area for an existing building. The driveway is to be screened by new tree planes and soil is removed from the site in order to facilitate creation of the proposed driveway and additional usable green space on site. And for the record, it's 247 Route 100. It's located in OLI, which is the office and Light Industries zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Lee Jones with Barton and La Judas, the design consultant, the engineering on record for working with, representing the applicant, Rockledge Center. So just to give you an understanding, I don't know if you're all familiar with this site, but it's across from Lawton Adams. It has the three, the three office buildings. You're only seeing the one office building now, a parking lot. Which actually I guess I could show you. There are three existing buildings on site now with a large parking lot in the center. That's where the Somer Sports Club is. So athletics happen in the buildings and offices as well. So they're proposing, there's a new tenant in the one, this one building that is, that needs access vehicular delivery access. So this is approximately 3,700 square feet of new asphalt. So again, to provide vehicular delivery access to the first floor of this existing building. So again, it's not changing the use of the site or anything like that. It's adding obviously some additional asphalt. Currently there is an existing earth berm in this area. So in addition on this site plan approval application is the removal of this berm across the road to Lawton Adams, to that, to the, to the yard there. It can also be distributed on site if board would prefer that because there is areas on the entrance drive that this soil could be placed. And again, they're proposing screening and new vegetation to screen this area. Elevation renderings too, just understand it. And this is the existing building here, and this would be where the new access is. And I know we received a comment letter this week too, so I have prepared responses to those. I don't know if you want me handing them out now, if we want to walk through them or how we want to handle that, or if there's any specific things you want to discuss.
I think walking through them would be helpful. That gives contacts. It gives the board.
That's great.
Texts and, and we can have any discussion that we need. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the first one is the fact that this is located within the town of Somers Ground Water Protection Overlay District. And so there are requirements on this in terms of requiring a special exception use permit for, with the preparation of a groundwater protection plan. So I was, um, because I know that there was in, within that code, I guess what is our requirements for that to, to receive that special?
So the, the code provides an outline of, of the kind of analysis that needs to be conducted, basically analyzing the proposed use and making a statement as to whether there's any risk to groundwater for a parking lot application. It's usually fairly simple. You're not adding nitrogen loading. You're not adding anything to that nature. You might comment on whether the, whether the usage of this property and this parking area is going to include any handling of hazardous materials or, or anything like that that might need to be considered, but it does not need to be overly extensive for this, but it does, it's part of the code and just needs to be analyzed to say if there is or isn't a risk to.
Okay. And is there actual specific analysis or testing that need to be done or just an evaluation of sort of the proposed uses and stating what you're saying?
There are, there are, there is an analysis of nitrogen loading in the code, but I think that that is relatively easily completed and we're happy to talk with you about that.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. So that seems pretty straightforward. Something we need to add.
It's a lot easier than the, the solid waste handling facility to yourself that also.
Yeah. So it also is indicating, the second comment is indicating the proposed storm drain connections between the proposed catch basins and storm storage, storm water management system and the tie-ins to the existing storm drain systems need to be indicated. So again, in terms of referring back to the groundwater protection overlay district because currently we're showing two different alternatives, whether subsurface storage units or a rain garden. I mean, it's preferable to subsurface storage units. And I don't know if there is a preference of the board of which approach is used.
I think in general, the town prefers bio retention areas as opposed to subsurface units, but that's not always appropriate in every site. I think our confusion here was again, with our review, which are you proposing?
Yep.
Review and comment on, on that. So.
Okay.
I mean, with, with regards to most of the.
It's all of.
Secondary, it's, it's details. We want to see the pipe. We want to see where it's going.
Okay. Cause we, I have a, I mean, again, I have it on 11 by 17 here. My plotter chose to break at the end of the day, but the, the plan is, is to have a storm, like the subsurface coal tech units type thing underneath, beginning with an isolator row to sort of address the groundwater concerns and then having an overflow connection to the existing storm water system on site. That's our intention. Does that seem appropriate? So if we.
That seems very conventional and appropriate for.
Okay.
Like this. Yes.
Okay. Excellent.
It might be helpful in that context to address briefly why, uh, cause I know the open space committee in, in town will comment on it, why a bio retention area is not more suitable than what you're proposing.
Right. I mean, and I would just state in terms of the use of the site currently, it's, I mean, this is again, where this is being placed and everything is, you can't see it from Route 100. You wouldn't be able to see the bio retention area either. And just in terms of the number of traffic of people in and out in terms of drop off of sports and all of that, I, I think it makes more sense to.
It's at the top of a, top of a knoll.
Yes.
And, and a lot of that comment is around, you know, amphibians getting trapped and things like that, which are, you know, more likely in areas that are wetland or wetland buffer than at the top of it.
Right. So obviously we'll provide the construction details for the stormwater detention system. And obviously we have, we'll have the calculations explaining obviously the increase in impervious and how we are not increasing any of the peak runoff volumes. The steep slopes, obviously the steep, are you referring to the berm itself?
So right now there's a berm with steep slopes that you are removing.
Yes.
So from a steep slopes protection standpoint, when we look at this, often you're, someone is proposing construction or disturbance of a steep slope that is then to remain.
I know.
You're moving the steep slope. So our, our concern is really how are you, can you tell us how you're going to sequence construction to make sure that you're not creating a highly erodible slope during construction that then causes issue post-construction? There's no slope. So there's no issue. It's more of a construction phase in question.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll have the, you know, the compost filter socks protecting any inlet basins, existing silt fencing and all that around the base. But again, this is going to be literally taken up, put in a dump truck going across the street that the, actually the process of doing it isn't going to take that long, that it's not going to be disturbed for that long. And then it'll obviously be restored with seed. I mean, paved a portion of it and then restored to lawn, the main remainder. Steep slopes, construction details, obviously with the drainage, those were on our drawings, but then they will be there. We'll finalize that. It mentions the, indicate the maintenance access pathway to ensure proper access to the, this was.
If you're.
Referring to the detention basin.
Yep.
But.
Really in, there's a lot of the details that we'll, we'll review in that resubmittal. I think the one thing that's worth discussing with the board and presenting is any change in parking that's associated with this.
No, currently there are two parking spaces that will be removed to allow this access into this area, but the area itself has the space for four parking spaces. So that new tenant that is using this access can have parking in that area.
And you have sufficient circulation with those parking spaces.
Yep.
Added inside. And then I guess while you're pulling that up, kind of the secondary question is, are either of the two spaces that are being removed accessible spaces? And if so, how's that being compensated on the site?
Currently the accessible spaces are located here. There are four here that are not being removed and then two more associated with the entrance to this other, the sports, Somer Sports Arena. This is, you know, showing the vehicle tracking in terms of access in and out of there and allowing for parking along this edge. And also in terms of that tenant, in terms of deliveries might not be every day that they can use that parking. So yeah, we're, as a minimum, we are, there are two spots right here, parallel parking along that edge to make up for those two. There's a chance they have additional parking as well, depending on their use on any given day.
Is there anything that the board should be aware of in terms of the timing of delivery and the use of the space, given a lot of, you know, young child pedestrian traffic through that parking area using the athletic facilities, say on weekends or evenings? I mean, is it a?
No, they're a Monday through Friday, nine to five type thing. And all the athletics are at night and the tournaments are on the weekends. So there's no overlapping of use there.
So we'll coordinate with the applicant's engineer on some of our opening, our remaining comments, but I don't, I don't have anything further that the applicant hired, highlighted the elements that I thought were important for the board to know.
I know it's not fair to shoot the messenger, but I'm just speaking for myself. I'm a little annoyed at what the owners of that did. The previous application came in to reconfigure the parking space for their thing and your folks did a lot of construction up there without any permits. Yes?
He, well, the.
Yes. Do they have permits?
No, to the start of the removal of the burns started without a permit.
All of it started without a permit. And quite frankly, that's, that's annoying. I don't know if they thought they could just piggyback on the first, on the first application, but.
Right.
You were up on the site. You know what I'm talking about? Anybody else went up there?
So, so my impression of this is your client is compartmentalizing the expansion of this in smaller little projects. And in reality, I think this is going to end up, the end result or goal of your client is to make this much bigger than it appears. And I say that because your clients in the previous application was asked several times about the usage of that gym and that it would only be for volleyball and volleyball instruction. But now I'm seeing advertisements for pickleball, which is incredibly popular and draws very large crowds and a lot of traffic. And so now in the back of mine, I have not been able to validate or substantiate that. I saw it on social media. It was clearly for that, for that center. And so, but that in conjunction with this now, and my next question is, who is your tenant and what type of business and deliveries are they expecting? Are we talking tractor trailers or are we?
No, box trucks only.
And what, what for, like what? Cause this, this is a office building space?
It's an office building space, but there's, I mean, I, that's, I, and I honestly don't know exactly what that tenant is because I'm not the building manager.
True.
But I believe it's, I think it's, I feel like he has told me, but I'm not remembering. I can get that answer to you, but it to me, my understanding is it's just delivery and drop off of items for that company. Nothing in excess of anything that would be again, outside of business hour.
A company could be an Amazon distribution center, right? A small one. I mean, we don't know. And you're asking for the. And you're asking for the ability to put in, uh, you know, an asphalt. Delivery driveway area, increase in in traffic flow, which was not presented to us previously. And and granted, because it was compartmentalized to that first project, which dealt with the athletic center. And so now we're beginning to encroach on the other buildings and what the plans are for those. And so I I just, and chairman, I I think that's where you're going possibly.
It's all upset all the trees were taken down too.
Yeah. So so, you know, there, there's been a couple of things now that have been presented to the town. That does not seem to be in line with what is actually going on there. All right. I'll stop short at that. So I think it would be prudent for your client or you as their representative to really. Let us know in depth about this.
The use of.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Again, box trucks today, but maybe it's tractor trailers tomorrow, right? And we already saw that we had issues with getting fire trucks in there. I'm hearing some rhetoric from other residents that the sports complex, the parking is more difficult now.
It it's not, I I work in the building.
Okay.
There every single day. It's not. I mean, people are dropping 90%.
They're on the weekends when the kids and the and all of that's going on.
No, but most, I mean, not a lot of that happens every single evening as well when the parking lot is, I would say, most full. Again, so anecdotally, I have never seen an issue with parking there and I've been. Going there as a coach or an athlete and working there for whatever decade, couple decades.
Had we thought that there would be an exponential increase in traffic, we would have asked for a traffic study. And, you know, because that's important for 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 the quality of life of the town. So, yeah, so I think it's important that we know what what type of business, what type of trucks, the frequency, the volumes. I'll stop short of saying it should be a traffic study, but at least let us know so that we can determine whether or not, you know, we do require some more in-depth look at this plan.
Right.
Is is there going to be a loading dock there or just parking?
Just just parking, it's it's at grade access into the building. There's no loading.
There's no, there's no big doors there. There's just truck parking.
They're adding in a new garage door on the building.
So now we have something else that.
Okay.
So now we're turning this into is a distribution center?
But also, also, um, with that, with all the material that was removed past, it's all piled up on the side, spread out slightly. I'd like to see more parking because I know kids that that attend there and while the parking is much better from the last project. It still was never intended to be a a sports facility. If you get 100 cars there, you're jammed at 30 cars, 40 cars. That extra spot on the right on the north side exit where there's where some of the extra material.
Yeah.
You could easily put 20 cars there, maybe, uh, additional park if you're going to keep the extra material on site.
So in their previous site plan approval from what the early 90s, the ex, the last bay of the parking lot was approved. Where am I? In the back here, there was another additional bay of parking that has been approved in previous site plans, but was never installed.
It's on the north side, uh, the the exit on furthest north, uh, where your new, um, where the where that where that construction was, where that that.
Yeah, 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 exactly. On the drive, north of the drive. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that might be a good spot for a 20 car spot. You never know.
So just for clarification, the the stop work order that was issued for the removal of the berm, that is the area that we're talking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I I'm going to echo everyone's concerns. I, I, you know, I feel like. The applicants have been less than forthcoming and that we're like getting, you know, and and I wonder. Actually, if it wasn't discovered what was going on, if that would ever have been brought to our attention for approval. I I'm a little concerned that you don't know who the applicant is, but you're assuring us that there's no increased danger to pedestrian traffic there. Because on previous applications, it was stressed that the, uh, there's a lot of traffic with drop offs at school. You know, after school, which would put them right into the, the, the nine to five or eight to five operational hours that, you know, I think we need more information concerning that to be assured that we're not. Allowing a an additional hazard, but but, you know, overall, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm still relatively new to the board. There were a lot of concessions made about parking spots on this or the requirements for parking on this site. And it seems now like we're nibbling back, you know, and talking about additional parking spots in areas that were not previously proposed. And and I just wonder, you know, if this is normal for kind of sequential applications on a site. It would almost seem to me to be wise to have a a conversation with the with the applicant to say. Are you, are you done? You know, or 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 maybe should you pause and come back to us with a complete application? That reflects all of your future planning there.
Yeah, I I think, um, part of the issue is that what the the prior, a prior applicant prodigy was their own applicant. I believe that the applicant in this case is the actual property owner itself.
Correct.
Prodigy proceeded on their own separately and the property owner did this work again without permission, without permits. Got caught, had to go to the town board, stop work order, all of that. So that's why they're now back here before your board. Uh, I think you're right. If the, um, if the property owner has designs for more improvements, they should be identified upfront.
Things otherwise is segmented and we're losing the ability to gauge the cumulative impact.
It's exactly right.
Which could trigger a traffic study.
Yes, and but, um. I'd like to go back through record because I had a previous conversation with Steve Wolfle. Who had indicated, uh, as the representative here had mentioned, that there was prior parking that was approved, was land banked. Uh, by and was approved by your board. It was land banked and that. If I, if I remember correctly, upon written recommendation by your board, the applicant. Must provide the additional parking. I want to get that language to you so that you have it and it's all clear for everybody so that you understand that. This issue was thought about by the planning board at one point. Decided to put it, you know, as a condition that the land bank parking is there. It's reserved for just this case when the facility may be. As successful as they all hoped it would be and that the parking is there is available. So there is a trigger mechanism. I want to get that to you so that you all have it as part of your continuing deliberations. If I could just ask one follow-up question. So that just point out the prodigy building, the building that the prior applicant for the volleyball they're in. Okay.
This one.
Right.
And soccer fields are in there and then these are offices.
Okay, so if there is a change of use in the office building where you're proposing, that's also a trigger for site plan. So you're.
I don't think it is, but again, I can't confirm that, but we'll all get that confirmation.
But let's.
An actual answer, yeah.
Right, you're the.
Of exactly what the use.
Your client should be very forthright with this board and with the town as to the designs for the property. Yeah.
Definitely. And then I just want to redact one thing that I said now that Dave clarified it. I had said that your client was previously in front of us. And Dave's right, that was prodigy athletics, who was a tenant of your client. So I just wanted to clarify that for.
Right.
That I do understand that now. So.
Yeah, and.
So I was, so I was gonna also say, while it would seem easier to put all the plans together, whatever the 18-month plan is. I don't know if it's if it's right to hold back your individual plans because sometimes you do a segment and sometimes the 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 next plans never happen. You know, I don't know what the the next plans are. Um, I'm happy that the current applicant is trying to clean up and improve the site. I would like to see more parking personally, but that's because. It's a much more popular and much busier building, which is great for the the owner or applicant. But segmenting the the projects, um, I don't know if we could, should, could or should control that. But, um, if they come back again for the next phase, then there could be more requirements, which could then undo the parts that were just done. So it would might be, might be easier to to put it all together, but I don't know if I would, uh, say we have to control that, but that's just my thought.
I think good planning, we should have it all now.
Yeah. But what if they're not, what if they don't have that plan? What if, what if these are just thoughts and hopes for down the line, you know, they might not have that timeline ready.
Well, I I mean.
Yeah.
You know, and this is personal comment here. If the tenant is making application for the landlord's property, they have to have some knowledge and approval. That that they can go forward and do it. And it, you know, so we need to to know in total what the issues are, what the opportunities are. And I share your opinion. I think if they are successful, there's not going to be enough parking on that site as as is currently designated.
There's already not.
Yeah, and and we.
My opinion.
You know, this board has always, uh, wanted to see businesses succeed in Somers. It's good for them. It's good for us. Uh, and so we're partners. I don't, if I came off adversarial, it's because, you know, there is some data that's cloudy to us. Whether it's the landlord or the tenant, either way, it's the site and we're we're concerned about the site and how the site impacts the town of Somers.
Of course.
So that's why we're we're now beginning to ask a lot of questions because we're seeing some of these inconsistencies here.
So to clarify a few things, obviously, because I've been listening to everyone talk, just in terms of, um, the berm itself and the trees that were on it, which I know obviously they moved forward with that without the proper permits in place. And while a loss of trees is never great, I, again, I work right there. I'm a landscape architect. Those were not any specimen trees or anything. They were more scrub type trees, Norway maples, things like that. Invasive type material and they are proposing obviously 25 plus or minus new trees, which would be native. So in terms of that concern, I would say there's going to be an improvement in that in terms of getting native material here. And then in terms of the overlapping uses, which is a concern, and I totally respect that. As again, this is the soccer field of where all the drop offs are happening in terms of this access here. And the act, the entry drive comes in and the people using this would come in basically the first bay and come in. And not, you know, come through the whole parking lot to have the overlapping of the drop off. And obviously, any given day, someone can drop someone off somewhere else or all that. But the majority of how this site works and how they're going to use it, the overlapping of use, oh, excuse me, is not happening. Like they are separate in terms of the different bays within the parking lot. So just, just wanted to clarify a few things.
It's not so much that that the trees were removed. I don't care if they were scrub trees, whatever. It's it was all done without any permits. That's.
That I I I.
That's what's.
I respected that. I would just then say.
I would suggest, I'm just one of seven, that you come back next time with some representatives from the building. And kind of lay out what their plans are.
Yeah, and obviously I've spoken, but then we are the engineering consultants and everything you're saying, the compartmentalizing, understanding the big picture is something we have spoken already with our client. And honestly, to Mike's point, it's like, obviously there are, they do have some ideas, but there is nothing. It's more of like, right now, they are obviously trying to lease and rent out their office spaces. This new tenant, you know, requires this, is requesting this access to the building in terms of for their use. And aside from that, there is no other true plans in the works and and I and I'm not, I'm not making that up. There just really isn't. Again, there's some thoughts and ideas, but nothing in any kind of near future. So I don't, and that's something that, again, I will have the applicant address sort of more specifically and have it come from them. But there is the sort of that desire of is this possible to get approved and move forward to allow this, you know, them to lease this space and to have this applicant move in and use the. Their space as intended, um, and then sort of have that other conversation as a continued conversation. So.
So it's not a loading dock, but it's going to be a new door at the side.
Yeah, that should be in one.
Bat my mind around that.
Well, what kind of door? Entry door or a?
Overhead garage, I thought she said.
I thought she said, that's what I'm trying.
Right, that's an important.
I'm trying to reconcile how it's not a loading dock once you do.
Yeah, it's, that's, that's.
Yeah, that that looks like a loading dock kind of situation. When I look at the overhead picture of where the delivery truck's going to be, I'm just thinking of the WB Masons type things I see at work. I'm, I'm just wondering how practical it is to plan on having two parking spots on the far side of it. How are those cars going?
Parallel parking? I mean, they would just be up against the.
It just.
The curb there.
It's going to be kind of close.
Does that?
Like the first car in, how are they going to get out?
I can't even see where that is.
Does that plan down there have the auto turn path?
I can't see from here.
So, yeah, right. And and then maybe you can illustrate what that turning motion is in that space.
What it's showing is that if we come in here, pull in to this, you know, nosed dead end here, then be able to back up, then be able to pull out.
Okay, all right. So it's going to be.
That's what the, that's why this extension of the parking exists to allow for that turn.
Is that where all the.
Parallel spots would be blocked in during a delivery or.
But yeah, they will. Exactly.
Right, but they, again, I think the intention would be that those would be for the people who worked in that, um, in that facility. That they wouldn't be taking up parking spaces in the.
Almost like a.
Existing parking lot. Yes. Yep.
Also, this building is is opposite the sports complex. It's it's not really close to where kids are being dropped off.
This is the act, this is the walkway the kids go into that.
Right, so it's really nowhere near where kids are. Kids are on the other side, I think, right?
No, the kids are coming in and out here and then this is that access and this is the entrance to that office building.
No, the the new area that you're proposing, that you're going to be putting a new parking lot, a new.
That's the gray.
Okay.
And there's no access to that tenant's space from the existing lower level.
There's a door, just a.
So on the north side of that, of building A?
Oh, over here? No, it's not.
On on the, um, on the entrance drive, there's kind of.
Yeah, there is a access there, but that's for different tenants. Yep.
The space within the building is divided, so this tenant.
Exactly.
Those.
Yeah, and it's divided only by pedestrian doors. No.
Do you, you work in that building?
Yes.
Okay, so about how many tenants are in there?
Currently, I actually, I don't actually know that number, but I've maybe five to 10, 10, I think, probably. Tenants right now.
What kind of businesses are they?
All different ones. Graphic designer, engineers, landscape architects, printing. Some that I don't know what they do. I'm waiting for our holiday office building holiday party to meet everyone.
But I figure since you said you work there.
Yeah. It's it's changed over the years though, because again, I worked there, um, 15, 20 years ago. There was a health, some medical company there for a while. It's changed every few years. And this, obviously, this building owner is new in the past year. So that's, again, the new tenants are coming in right now. So there are new ones that I don't know exactly what they do.
Yeah, I think, I think we've all kind of expressed that we applaud the improvements and that we value them.
Absolutely. Yes.
You know, they're, they're, they're definitely a step in the right direction. We just need a little bit more transparency, I think, in terms of what the plans are and what the plans, you know. The ultimate ones. And again, I think, I think I voiced at least the concerns of several of the board members that I I have real concerns about parking and flow there. I, I.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Well, again, is this something I'm just sort of curious in terms of moving forward with approvals or sort of the next steps of. If this is something that would go to a public hearing and then if is this something that we could move forward with sort of this site plan approval and then have that other conversation of. Bigger picture, but allowing this to move forward is there? Is that a possibility?
I think we're now we're near public hearing. I think you need to come back with some representatives so we can talk and get questions and answers from them.
Okay.
I'm just one speaking.
Yeah, no, I I agree with that. I think it's important that we understand, uh, like, so so we get it. You guys are going to build, uh, an impervious hammerhead to facilitate trucks. We need to know more about the the trucks, uh, sizes. I heard you say box trucks, but let's confirm that. Let's get a better understanding of what type of business this is. If it's deliveries, is it supplies? Are they going to manufacture something there? That helps us understand total volume because we are already hearing from multiple members. That there are already traffic problems in this site. And so now we're we're facilitating more traffic, larger vehicles than what we was presented before, where it's passenger cars dropping off kids. And then folks like yourself who come to work usually in commuter vehicles, passenger cars.
Yeah, I mean, but again, and we have UPS, FedEx, delivery trucks at this site all day, every day, nine to five. I mean, that's what's happening. This is just one more, in theory, like one more truck that's part of this.
I don't like, I don't like working theoretical. I like to be, I like to know, right? Yes, so UPS may have a morning delivery and an afternoon delivery, right? And then they may do a pickup delivery, so maybe three for a large office building.
Yeah, I think that's true. And and, you know, is it just shipping? Is this, is it in addition to receiving? Is it also shipping? You know, I, it would be, uh. Even when you could ballpark the number of additional trucks that are going to be entering that site every day, I think that's important.
And I think this goes back to what Steve was outlining when you were asking the questions about the permits of the CUP. And it's, it's being in a sort of catalog, quantify, describe the activities. And from that, we can understand what the impacts would be. And I think what you're hearing from the board is a need to know more. And the underlying principle of public hearings. And the underlying principle of public hearing is always that we are, we want to gather enough information that the public has something to think about, that they know what the issues are on the table before the public hearing starts. And then we're looking to hear more information from the public. So as a sequence of events, I think, to gather more information first and then move to the public hearing. So we'd agree with you, John.
So my my question, my thought is, this project is halfway done, started, I guess, improperly or without without permits. But if if the ultimate goal of the first step is to get more parking, to remove that mound and at least get more parking, would that at least be a good first step to to solve one's problem? If he can't, if he's not going to, whoever the owner or person is, is not going to move forward with the next step, even if there is no next step, at least there'd be more parking.
Right.
You know, so so I don't know what the next steps are. I don't know if there are any next steps. But now this this project is half done, half, I don't even know if it's a mess over there. But if they move forward with the first steps, which is removing that mound and at least providing more parking, at the very least, for trucks or not, you can't have more trucks until you open that door open.
But but Steve needs more information before he can comment on it. I'm putting words in your mouth.
So in contrast to the prior application, which was a single family residential lot, you know, relatively small impact and and a and a different use than this, for larger and commercial applicants, we usually look for a pretty complete application so that the that the public can comment on it to Vicki's point. You know, in this case, the the nature of the use, the frequency of the use, and while we don't, while our comments are not extensive, they do disclose environmental information to the public, like the groundwater protection plan, that is important for the public to review. So that's how those, there's kind of two different recommendations for two different kinds of applicants. I think it's it's prudent to for this board, I think you've all asked for more information prior to to make available to the public for that public hearing.
Yeah, and I think once we have a better idea of what they want, I think it would warrant a sidewalk.
Yeah, I agree with that. Don't know if we have enough info.
That could be scheduled, no?
Well, but again, you know, if we're going to do a sidewalk, we really need to know what the end game is in terms of demand for parking and and how much traffic is going to go in there and everything else, I think. I mean, it's just.
Do it in January, at least if the applicant comes in, then be wouldn't be before we have another meeting, I think.
Can I just to clarify and understand everything in terms of the, obviously, the applicant that the application is to remove the berm and add in this access drive for this tenant. And it sounds like the concerns on the board is really more about the use of the tenant than it is necessarily about the design of removing the berm and adding the.
I think it's both.
Access.
It's both.
Okay, what's well, I guess, what's the concerns then of adding the access? Is it the stormwater management stuff that we discussed earlier on or?
We need more information.
No, 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 but I, to me, there's two different things here. One is like the additional impervious and are we handling it right with the stormwater stuff, which obviously we're, we will provide those details.
But we haven't seen it, right? Steve, I mean, correct me.
We've received the the plans that are that are shown. We've asked for some additional information and analysis on those plans. I think if this applicant were coming and saying, this berm is an eyesore, and I'd like to remove it, they'd be before your board for a site plan approval that doesn't include any parking or impervious surface or anything like that. The applicant has disclosed that they're taking down the berm in order to provide additional access for additional use of the property, and that is the board's concern. So that's how the two are. I I think the board is asking for information both.
Right.
On the stormwater side, especially in the groundwater protection overlay district. And as a result of that action, you're adding additional access to this building through a busy corridor. Is that a concern? And they're looking for some information to assess that impact.
Yeah, I mean, it's all interconnected.
Right, again, I'm I I understand that. I was more just of understanding, I think I've checked all the boxes in terms of understanding what you need, and we have those details, and I can get that. That's not hard to do. And then the other is obviously speaking with the applicant and getting those other answers. So we can get, again, in my head, as while they're interconnected, there's two different pieces there in terms of what is being evaluated. Okay, so is this will be on the January 8th meeting again?
If you have more information for us, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, again, because we already have all the stormwater stuff, so that won't be difficult, and I'll coordinate with the applicant to get the other information to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does this hang up?
David, have you heard from Kennedy? No, but I I don't think they necessarily have to be here.
Okay.
If you want to move to that next item.
Okay. Agenda. Kennedy Catholic Preparatory Schools for a fieldhouse application for site plan approval. We have in front of us consideration of draft resolution 2024-19. For the record, it's granted of conditional site plan approval and stormwater management erosion sediment control permit to Kennedy Catholic Preparatory School. The applicant is proposing a new 3,150 foot square foot fieldhouse adjacent to the sports field for exercise equipment to support the existing student population, located in the center of the property at the southeast corner of the main athletic field. And for the record, the property is located before Route 138, and it's in an R120 zoning district.
So, yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, you have a resolution before you. As you recall at your last meeting, the applicant needed to get sign off from the Bureau of Fire Prevention for the access road. They met with them, the bureau signed off, so that's why you have the resolution before you. I will admit that I was on a very good streak of preparing resolutions with no comments from Ms. Vicki. But you did point out that on page four, on the the top paragraph, there is a, it says relative to construction of a blank, and I forgot to fill that in. So that is relative to a construction, construction of a fieldhouse and other related improvements. So that is the only editorial change to the resolution that's currently before you. Thank you, Vicki.
Nipped them just in time.
Keeping me on my toes.
2024 would have been clean. Thank you.
Oh, so close.
All right, so is there any other, any other member of discussion? I make a motion that we accept resolution 2024-19.
Second.